Thank you, everyone in the audience for joining us this evening. I'll start the meeting off with introductions of my fellow board members, starting over with Tom Holland, Mark Kaiserschad, Cindy Cremmons, Dick Minnick, Brian Bell, Erica Sherrier, who's the newest member of the board. To my right is Mary Bowen Ingebrant, to my left is School District Attorney Mick Walzberger. He will also serve as our parliamentarian. Director of Financial Services is Tim Erickson on the end. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mick.
Good evening. My name is Mick Walzberger, and it's my privilege to have the opportunity to serve as your parliamentarian this evening. Before we begin, I'd like to briefly review the parliamentary procedures or ground rules that will apply at the meeting this evening. The procedures are basically intended to promote an orderly and efficient free-flowing meeting. First of all, you have to understand who is an elector. This is an annual meeting of the electors, and each of you who is a citizen of the United States, is eighteen years of age or older, and has resided in the School District of Hudson for ten or more days before this annual meeting, is referred to as an elector, and you have the right to vote at this annual meeting. Each elector has the right to make comments and to ask questions at the appropriate place on the agenda. Comments must relate to an agenda item, and you are encouraged to submit other comments, meaning those that don't relate to an agenda item, in writing to the superintendent or to make them during the public comment session of any regular board meeting. After we get through item seven on the agenda, which is the item that deals with the budget hearing, the electors will be provided with an opportunity to make comments and to ask questions and to make motions. If you're an elector and you desire to make comments or to ask questions, you must come up to one of the microphones, state your first and last name, state your address, and then wait to be recognized by the chair. After you've been recognized by the chair, you may proceed with your comments at that time. Only one elector may speak at a time, and no elector should speak more than once on the same subject. If a large number of people desire to speak, and I don't think we'll have that problem tonight, debate or comments or questions could be limited to five minutes per person in the discretion of the chair. As an elector, as I indicated earlier, you have the right to make motions relating to agenda items. And again, the proper time to do that is after item seven on the agenda, which is the budget hearing. Although the school board has the ultimate authority to vote and consider a tax for the operation and maintenance of the schools of the Hudson School District, the electors may also vote such a tax. If the electors fail to vote a sufficient tax, or they vote one that doesn't comply with the revenue limits, then the board has the ultimate authority to correct that and to vote a sufficient tax in compliance with the revenue limits. There's a specific procedure that's required to be followed when an elector makes a motion, similar to when you're making a comment or a question. An elector is, who wants to make a motion, must come up to the microphone, state your first and last name, state your address, and then wait to be recognized by the chair. After you've been recognized by the chair, you can then go ahead and proceed to make your motion. Language for making a motion to approve the tax levy is in your booklet on page twenty-two, and it's titled "Proposed Resolution to Set Tax Levy for 2007-2008." After a motion has been made, another elector must come forward and second the motion, again, making the same statement, meaning your first and last name and your address, and then say, "I now second the motion that's been made." Once a motion has been seconded, the chairperson will restate the motion, and at that time it may be debated or put to a vote. After any debate has occurred, the chair will put the motion to a vote. If any elector believes that debate has become too lengthy or drawn out, the elector may move to what's called "limit the debate." For example, an elector may state, "I move to limit debate to a total of ten minutes." We encourage electors, although they have right to use this procedure, to do it sparingly as we want to encourage debate and input from the electors. Alternatively, an elector at any time may quote "move the previous question," end quote. That's a fancy way of saying that you're going to move to have a vote on the pending question immediately without any additional debate or comments. A two-thirds vote is required to pass a motion to move the previous question. As an elector, you also have the right to vote at this annual meeting by voice. It's going to be a voice vote only. Generally, all in favor of a motion will be asked to say aye, and all opposed will be asked to say no. If the vote on a motion is close or unclear, the chairperson or I will ask the electors who said aye to stand up and verbally count off, beginning with the number one up to whatever number we end with. After being counted, each elector will sit down. The same procedure will then be used to count the no votes, and the chairperson will announce the result of the vote at the end. Lastly, in terms of procedure, each of you as an elector has the right to challenge voter eligibility. The chair may accept a challenge to the eligibility of any person who is attempting to vote at the annual meeting. If the person who has been challenged declares that he or she is eligible to vote, and the challenge is not withdrawn, the chair must administer an oath or affirmation to the person, and that oath will be read at the time if that arises. So now, having reviewed the meeting procedures, the next item on the agenda for this evening, which is item three, calls for the election of a chairperson to preside over this special, or over this annual meeting of electors. Once a nomination is made, I will ask if anyone is willing to second that nomination, and if so, a vote will be taken on the nomination. If there's no second, the vote will fail for a lack of a second. So at this point in time, I'm asking for nominations, and that means that any elector may now approach, including a board member, and voice a nomination for a chair.
I'd like to nominate Dan Chernohoy as chairperson. I will second that motion.
We have a first and a second to nominate Dan Chernohoy to serve as the chair of the annual meeting. All in favor of nominating Dan Chernohoy to preside as the chair of this annual meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the nomination, say no. The ayes have it on a unanimous vote. Chairman?
Thank you, Mick. And again, thanks, everyone, for attending the annual meeting. This is a meeting for the electors, so the intent of this meeting is, is for you to ask questions and, and participate in this session. With that said, we'll start out with Superintendent Mary Bowen Ingebrant with her comments. Mary?
I welcome each of you, and thank you for making the Hudson School District your priority this evening and throughout the school year. Certainly, our students and our staff benefit from your support. This evening, I will really talk about and focus my, my comments on 2006, 2007, some highlights from the year, and also looking forward to this year, 2007, 2008. What can you expect? Tom Holland and Tim Erickson will be talking about financial information, so I will leave that to them this time. First of all, I want us to highlight some of the things that our students do, and some of the accomplishments they have had over the last year. As I tried to put this together with the help of many of my colleagues, I kept running out of room, so please know, these are only representative accomplishments of Hudson School District students during 2006, 2007. Certainly, we are proud of Hudson School District students, and as you can see, I'm highlighting many of the accomplishments of high school and middle school students that are quite exemplary. And now, we're going to focus more towards our elementary students and some of their accomplishments. And again, these are only some of our students' accomplishments. We're also proud of our student athletes, and some of those accomplishments are highlighted Certainly, we are proud of our staff and the accomplishments that you see of students are representative of the talents of our staff. And so, we're going to highlight a few of the accomplishments, achievements, and awards of our staff members. First of all, Shar Kruger, who received the State Louise Sublet Award and Manager of the Year Award, and she is part of the Student Nutrition Staff at Rock. Mike Yell has been elected as President-elect of the National Council Teachers of Social Studies, and certainly represents the Hudson School District as he travels through the country. Matt Friedel, high school government teacher, has been elected Vice President, President-elect of the Wisconsin National Board Network. And Chris DeLeon has been selected, or was selected, to attend the NASA Space Camp for teachers this summer. He is a middle school tech ed teacher. And lastly, Carol Gilbert and Mary Hineker taught reading in South Korea to teachers. Both of these teachers are reading specialists, Carol at the Middle School and Mary at Hudson Prairie. And as we continue on, some other accomplishments of our staff over the last year and things they have been involved in. And again, this could go on for pages and pages and pages over the last year, but it represents a small portion of the work, the very good work of our staff, and obviously, that last one, our board members as well, who support the work of our students and the work of our staff. We are very fortunate in the Hudson School District to have talented teachers, support staff, and administrators who help our students achieve. Now, we're going to focus our time now on some data from last year. Certainly, our focus is on improving student learning. That's our primary focus. And so, as we seek to raise our expectations for learning and performance, we are monitoring results and looking at a number of indicators. So one of the indicators that we have just started looking at over the last year is how many of our students are moving into the advanced level on the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concept Exam. This is a state exam taken throughout the state, and we're looking at how many of our students are actually moving up. This is the highest level of achievement on this test. So if you can look at these reading results, certainly, the year at the bottom is their graduation year. So the first purple column, they were third graders, and then they took the test as fourth graders, and the bar shows what percent of the students scored in advanced, in reading, in the area of reading. And you can see, we are starting the next year to move those numbers up, and that certainly is our goal, to move more of our students into, into advanced levels, to improve their learning. And we'll look at it in relationship to math. And beside that third and fourth of the class of 2015, we are moving up in the other areas. Now, you need to know, this is trend data, so it isn't a, should not be a one-year look at this data. It should be over time, and we want to see how our students perform over time, knowing we are increasing our expectations and support for student learning at higher levels. Moving on to ACT scores, the ACT is a curriculum-based measure of college readiness. Juniors and seniors take this, and this is a screener for college entrance. And starting out in the year 2004, 2005, Hudson was just a little bit above the state level. Moving on to the next year, you can see an increase. The state level still staying the same. Now, this is a composite of all of the different curriculum tests that are taken. And then, if, moving on to this year, this last year, you can see that there's been 1.2 increase from 2004, 2005 in Hudson, and yet, the state has really stayed at the same level. That's a very significant increase. It sounds small, but on the ACT, it is a very good improvement, and we want to continue to monitor these results, and again, trend over time, looking for that continual moving on up. Turning our focus to Advanced Placement results from last year, we have nine Advanced Placement courses, and this courses, Advanced Placement courses allow our high school students to take college, courses that offer college credit at colleges that they may attend. So it offers them to take a higher level of curriculum and also has a financial advantage because they may be able to have credit as they enter college for those courses and not have to take some courses, and they may be able to start at a more advanced level. So you can see that our results in Advanced Placement with more of our students taking those tests, and students taking more Advanced Placement tests over time, that our students are scoring very well. The score on Advanced Placement is one to five, five being the highest, and three, four, and five are a passing score. What are some of the other things that occurred during 2006, 2007 highlights? Certainly, with the support of our community, we passed a referendum for a new elementary school, and Rivercrest is underway. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute as we look to 2007 and 2008. That really addressed our long-term need for elementary space for learning. Additionally, we've added classrooms at the high school for the 2007, 2008 school year, and we've increased the capacity of this building by doing that from 1,520 students to 1,680 students. And by moving the district offices into a building that we purchased with the support of our community, an existing office building, we had, that we now call the Administrative Service Center, that made room in the high school. And not only did it make room for additional classes, classrooms, it also allowed the high school to reconfigure a number of the other classrooms so that they make more sense and could offer courses more efficiently. And lastly, in these highlights, certainly, we will be beginning the long-range strategic planning process called HSD 2025. That began in 2006, 2007, and again, I want to talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. Brian Bell is the co-chair of that team that's working. So moving to 2007, 2008, what are we looking forward to and what can we expect? Certainly, we can expect more students. And I always put numbers out before our official count on the third Friday in September with some trepidation because we know these numbers will change as students come into our system and students leave our, our system as well. So if we look at last year, during the official count in September, that first column at elementary, we had 2351, middle school 1110, and high school 1695, for a total, official total of 1556 students in the Hudson School District. So preliminarily, during the first week of classes, and again, I caution everyone, these numbers will change. At elementary, we have an increase of 77 students, or a 3.3% increase. At middle school, we have 55 new students, and that is a 5% change, certainly more than we anticipated, and the board has taken action this evening at their Board of Education meeting, their business meeting, to add staff at this time to help support those students and their learning. And then, at the high school, we're about level at the present time, so holding level. Hazel Reinhardt, who is a very experienced demographer, thought this year, or projected this year, that we would have 2,331 students at elementary, and you can see, we're well over that, that we would have 1,138 students at middle school, and we're over that. And at the high school level, we'd have 1,662 students, and we're over that. So total enrollment from Hazel Reinhardt's projections that she did in the fall of 2005 was 5,131 students. So we know our numbers will change, but what we can tell you, that they will continue to grow, and we will have more students. Even in a time when we're hearing about foreclosures, we're hearing about many homes on the market, the Hudson School District is continuing to grow. Looking at the next slide for 2007, 2008, certainly, space for learning is an important issue when you look at those numbers and know that we have more students in the district. And we will be looking forward to and preparing for the opening of Rivercrest Elementary. And we're looking at and designing this as a school community center. The common areas of the school, for example, the cafeteria, the gym, the media center, all of those areas are very accessible as you walk in the front door. There will be a trail around the site, and we're leaving as much of the site as natural as, as we can to hope families and individuals will enjoy that as another park-like setting. We have fields that we're adding to that site that we know we'll, we'll use as a district, but we also want our community to use those, and we'll be adding a trail all the way around the site for our community to use. This school will be environmentally friendly. It will save in operating costs because of the way it's being designed. The school itself will be an environmental teaching tool, and we're looking at developing curriculum around that teaching tool. And we are looking at partnerships. We have a partnership already established with the YMCA Camp St. Croix, and we will be pursuing that. And also, we're looking at a partnership, hopefully, to develop with UW River Falls and the Area Sustainability. And of course, we have now addressed as a district, the Board of Education has taken action to address elementary short-term plan for space for learning, also with Rivercrest, a long-term plan, and a high school short-term plan by adding those extra classrooms and moving the district offices out. But now, we will be turning our focus, and I know the board is anxious to get at this, at their September 25th Board Work Session, to start working on a long-term plan for grade six through 12 space for learning needs. As we look at strategic planning and moving forward, I talked about HSD 2025, and this is a team of seventeen individuals representing business community, parents, students, teachers, and administrators who are drafting vision, mission, value statements, and graduate outcomes for the district. There will be multiple opportunities over the next year to gain community feedback on those drafts, and the drafts, the final approval that the Board of Education will give us, will set direction for the future of this district. It'll provide direction and a basis for decision-making to help continue the success, tradition of success in the Hudson School District for our graduates as they leave us. Out of those vision, mission, value statements, and graduate outcomes, we will get more specific and start to narrow our focus and prioritize our actions in three-to-five-year action implementation plans. So much more to come in HSD 2025. The reason it's called 2025 is a focus on children that are born this year will be in the class of 2025, and certainly, we want all Hudson High School graduates to be successful as they enter the world that continues to change and becomes more global. It isn't the same world that I entered or that each one of us entered as a high school graduate, and we need to look at what do we need to do to help prepare our graduates so they continue the Hudson High School level of success. Hudson School District is moving on up, and our focus, as I talked about before, is higher expectations for student learning and their performance. We start with our low-performing learners, and we want to move them up into the area of average-performing learners. And then, we want to take those students who are performing at the average level now and move them up to perform at the advanced level. And our advanced students, we want to take them higher and offer them more challenge and skills. And that's what we're continuing to look at, how do we use continual improvement to continue the traditions of success in the Hudson School District, and to challenge ourselves to hold higher expectations for ourselves and for our students, and to support their success for each and every one of our students. This is a goal over time. It won't be accomplished in a year. We looked at some trend data, and we'll continue to look at that, but we in the Hudson School District are on the road. We're, we are a district on the move, and we are moving from good to great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, for that report. We'll now move into the financial overview and the discussion of the proposed budget. We'll start with Board Treasurer, Tom Holland. Thanks, Tom.
Good evening and welcome, and thank you for your attendance this, this evening. I'm going to be referring to the, the Green Annual Meeting booklet that you have and jumping from a couple of pages to other pages, and so I hope you'll be able to follow along with me. You've heard tonight from Mary the high performance of this school district. I want to demonstrate to you tonight that it comes at a very good value in terms of cost to us as taxpayers. I'd like to refer, first of all, to page eight, the preliminary mill rate calculation on the 2007-08 levy. This shows you a history of the mill rate and the, the tax levies over the past year, starting with 1989, excuse me, 1989 to 1990, down to present proposed levy this evening at, of, for the year 2007-08. At the bottom of that, of that column, it'll show you that the, the current valuation of our district and the percent change of 4.23%. That's a modest increase over what we've experienced in past years based on the housing, housing situations that is being experienced across the country. Total levy that's being proposed this evening amounts to $24,267, excuse me, $24,267,230, which is just under 1% increase. This, this then translates to a mill rate of $6.93 per, per thousand household. This is a decrease of last year's mill. This is a decrease of last year's mill rate of three-point-one-four percent. The two thousand and seven and oh eight proposed preliminary budget levy is seventy-eight thousand dollars less than the two thousand and four oh five levy. The mill rate percentage change is down again. This is the sixth consecutive year in a row. And that six-dollar-ninety-three percent, six-dollar-ninety-three cent mill rate is compared to last year's seven-dollar-and-sixteen-cent mill rate is a three-point-one-four decrease. The six-dollar-ninety-three cent estimated mill rate is the lowest in twenty-four years. So I hope you'll understand that in comparing this, you'll look at this school district to other districts within our CISA district. The Hudson ranks at thirty-three, number thirty-three lowest district out of a total of thirty-nine districts in our CISA district, in respect to the mill rate. Statewide, Hudson ranks three-hundred-and-twenty-sixth out of four-hundred-and-twenty-six school districts with respect to the mill rate. So we are a high-performing district at a low value cost. While the mill rate has gone down, the district's enrollment has gone up. Over the past ten years, the district's enrollment has gone up forty-two percent, meaning we had three thousand seven hundred and twenty-four students in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, compared to this year's preliminary first-week enrollment of five thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-nine students. At the same time, the mill rate has gone from ten dollars and forty-seven cents to the proposed six dollars and ninety-three cents. Over the past fourteen years, the district's enrollment has gone up fifty-seven percent. In other words, we went from three thousand three hundred and seventy-one students in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, and the mill rate went from eighteen dollars and forty-five cents again to six dollars and ninety-three cents. So, good value, good management, and a very wonderful report that I'm privileged to give you tonight. Let me give you an example, another comparative. The Hudson School District in terms of cost per student is nine thousand two-hundred-and-twenty dollars per student. That's with an enrollment of five thousand seventy-six students. By comparison to other districts in the state that are similar size and are considered high-performing, it compares with, for example, Whitefish Bay, which has a student enrollment of two thousand five hundred and fourteen students. Their cost per student is eleven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars, again compared to the Hudson cost per student of nine thousand two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. The Wisconsin State Average is ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars cost per student compared to the nine thousand two-hundred-and-twenty with Hudson. And finally, New Richmond, at the lower end, has two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight students. Their average cost per student is nine thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. Again, so a comparative to a very good cost control and, at the same time, high performance. Then I'd like to just refer you to the bottom of that, page eight, where it identifies preliminary valuation by taxing district. This is simply a breakout of the districts that make up the twenty-four million two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar tax levy. You can see that the City of Hudson, Town of Hudson, Town of St. Joseph, Town of Troy, Village of North Hudson, all are listed, and their percentage of value, their valuations and increases, and in the case of North Hudson, a decrease, but their valuations and the percentage of what they pay as to the total of the tax levy. Then I would refer you back to page six, and I apologize for jumping around here, but if you'll turn to page six, you'll see a listing by fund of the revenue and the expenses proposed for the two thousand and seven eight budget, and what has happened in oh-five, oh-six, and oh-six, oh-seven. You'll note there at the bottom of the revenue totals, that there's fifty, there was fifty-seven million four hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars audited as a revenue budget for oh-five, oh-six, or actuals. In oh-six, oh-seven, it was seventy-nine million seven hundred and eighty-four thousand two-hundred-and-five. The inflated number here is related to line items thirty-nine R and forty-nine R on that, which represent, in both those lines, the capital revenue that the district is realizing as a result of the referendum that was passed, and the loans that are being issued now for the development of the new elementary school, as well as the purchase of the new school district offices. As far as the expenditures by fund, again, if you look at the bottom totals, you'll see a difference here between the oh-six, oh-seven budget year of fifty-nine million three hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and nine dollars compared to what's projected in oh-seven and oh-eight of eighty-eight million four hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Here again, these are the dollars, and if you look at line items thirty-nine E, forty-nine E, and ten E, all of those lines relate again to the capital dollars that have been voted on by this constituency for the development of the new elementary school and the school district. So it's an unusual year, and the actual growth that you'll see probably and hear from Tim about is an actual three-point-nine-five percent growth in the budget, not what you're necessarily seeing here on paper. So. Then I'd like you to turn to page twenty-eight, and on page twenty-eight is a listing of all the outstanding debt issues for the district as of June thirtieth, two thousand and seven. And you'll note that at the bottom, the last three items that are listed, the bond anticipation promissory notes, general obligation bonds, and the general obligation promissory notes, all are related again to the recent capital items of the new elementary school and the school district offices. And finally, I'll ask you to turn to page twenty-four, which shows the balance sheet for the district. It shows assets totaling twenty-two million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, of which cash and investments make up twelve million eighty-seven thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and receivables at ten million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. With liabilities, payables, and other liabilities, we have payables and other liabilities totaling one million two hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, with holdings and net payroll at three million fifty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-one, with a total liability of four million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Leaving then with us a fund balance, not all of which is cash, as you can see, but a total fund balance of eighteen million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. But of that eighteen million dollars, four million four hundred and twelve thousand dollars has been reserved for, again, the capital items that have been identified as the new elementary school and the school district offices. This leaves then a total balance in the fund balance of thirteen million seven hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for that report. At this time, we'll continue the financial discussion with our Financial Director, Tim Erickson.
It's nice to see all of you here tonight, and it's a privilege for me to present the budget for the school district. First off, I want to make sure that I thank all the many people who work on this budget throughout the year. Our budget process starts in December and January, and really culminates next month with the passage of a final budget for the district. But I want to thank the building administrators and their staff, district office administrators and staff, department heads, and also my office, and a special thanks to Lois for helping put together this booklet that you're looking at tonight. I'm going to skip ahead a little bit in your booklet, and I think we're going to jump right over to page six, again referencing a little bit about what Treasurer Holland touched on tonight in the revenues and expenditures by fund of the district. And not to go into too much detail, but I think it's good to have a little bit of an overview of what the funds represent. And the general fund really accounts for most of the district operations, most of the educational operations and ancillary functions of the district. It accounts for everything except the other funds that you see underneath the general fund. So special, the special revenue trust fund is actually grants that are received to the district for educational opportunities, things such as education foundation grants. A special education fund accounts for all special education activities and education of students. The referendum approved debt service fund is our debt service, payments on debt that were voter-approved for building, mainly building projects and large capital projects. And the capital projects fund normally is not used unless you have a capital project going on, which we do now at this point with Rivercrest Elementary. Food service fund is a non-taxpayer, non-locally taxpayer-funded operation, and of course, that's known as the school lunch program. Community service, again, is non-taxpayer funded. Those are funded through fees, as is extended daycare. And the final fund, vocational education co-op, is cooperative opportunities between Hudson and other districts for programs that they would not ordinarily receive funding for. So with that general overview of the funds, again, I'll just touch again on grand revenue totals, which you see at the bottom, middle bottom of the page of that section, where you've got fifty-seven million, seventy-nine million seven eighty-four, and sixty-four million six ninety-two. It looks a little bit like a roller coaster ride, and the reason for that is mainly due to the construction of the new elementary school. We've got, in the oh-six, oh-seven year, we have approximately nineteen million dollars that are flowing into funds that are for bond issues, and flowing into funds for the construction of the elementary school. Fund thirty-nine has receipts of a twenty-year bond issue, about nine and a half million. And then Fund forty-nine, which is a capital projects fund, has a revenue of nine million seven eighty-four, which was a short-term issue. And I won't get into the details of how we finance that, but you certainly be welcome to call my office, and I could sit down and go through that with you if you're really interested. Looking at expenditures, look at the general fund, which is account number ten E. And if you read across, starting with the oh-six, oh-seven year in the middle, forty-four million one seventy, then we jump to forty-nine million oh thirty-one. What we do have as expenditures in the general fund is we do have expenditures for the purchase of the Administrative Service Center, which was a result of freeing up space in the high school. And then we also have planned to spend about one-point-five million dollars for Rivercrest Elementary, and that will come out of fund balance. But this is how we report it and show it on our budget. Again, looking at that same column under thirty-nine E, which is the referendum debt service fund, we've got fourteen million one eighty as expenditures, and that's accounting for the short-term financing that we did for Rivercrest. And again, I won't go into a lot of detail on that, but we actually have, we actually made a payment at the end of last month for about nine-point-seven million. So if you take that nine-point-seven million out, that really brings that fund back down to a normal level. Fund forty-nine, which is a capital projects, we're estimating that in oh-seven, oh-eight, we will be spending approximately twelve million five hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects fund for the construction of Rivercrest. And that's for the oh-seven, oh-eight year. We will also have expenditures in oh-eight, oh-nine, as we close out and complete Rivercrest. And again, when you're looking at funds fifty, eighty, eighty, and eighty-one, those are fee-based programs, so they don't have an impact on the property tax levy. Page seven is what's called a revenue limit worksheet. And you'll note, if you look under the right-hand, at the top of the right-hand column, it says current law and capital letters. And what that means is that we have based our budget on what the current law is right now, because we're still waiting from Madison to find out what direction and the finalization of funding plans for governments. We are basing our budget again on the current law and not any proposals that are out in the legislature at this time. And I'm going to draw your attention down to line thirteen, which is the allowable limited revenue, and what that number represents, twenty-four million one fifty, that represents the amount of capacity or the amount, the maximum amount that the district could levy on its district residents. Now, that's the maximum. Now, if we go to line fourteen, the total limited revenue to be used, that number, nineteen million seven seventy-four, is what we're proposing to levy for the general fund operations, and that's exclusive of debt service. But the difference between those two is about four-point-three million dollars. So the district is leaving, or not leaving, they're under-leaving by about four-point-three million dollars for the oh-six, or the oh-seven, oh-eight year. And again, if we just touch base very quickly on page eight, which are the preliminary mill rate calculations for oh-seven, oh-eight, you can see that the, of course, probably not news to most people, but our percentage and district valuation, the growth rate has been, has been reduced quite substantially over previous years. You can see back in ninety-two, ninety-three, and ninety-three, ninety-four is when we last had a lower single-digit growth. Again, the change in levy, which is the twenty-four million two sixty-seven, which is the total levy proposed, and that's for district operations, including debt service, that change over the previous year is under one percent, at point-nine-five percent. That brings the mill rate to six ninety-three per one thousand, again, which is a three-point-one-four percent decrease over the previous year. You'll note, under the preliminary valuation by taxing district, we did have one taxing district within the, within the school district, the Village of North Hudson, that actually realized a decrease in their valuations this year. And according to the State Board of Equalization out of Eau Claire, they did review their files, and they did have some adjustments downward in property values in both the commercial and residential. So that's, that hasn't happened for several years here. And you'll notice there's a small footnote at the bottom, and that says values before final state certification. So these numbers may change slightly. Nothing is written in stone here. The numbers come out in a final format in October from the state. So again, these numbers may change. Our budget numbers may even change slightly from what you see here tonight. If you look at the next page, page nine, we have a thirteen-year history of property taxes on a typical residence within the school district. And if you look at nineteen, the year nineteen ninety- And if you look at nineteen, the year nineteen ninety-four, and read across to the column "school district portion," you'll see that's one thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars. That's the school district portion of the tax, of the taxes on this particular home back in nineteen ninety-four. Now, if you go to two thousand and six, you can see that school district portion is actually less by sixteen dollars than it was in nineteen ninety-four. So it's one thousand, three hundred dollars. And then down in that box down at the bottom, we've got a little summary of what's taken place. From ninety-four to two thousand and six, total property taxes went up by seven-hundred-and-eighty, about seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, or about almost forty percent. So that's, on average, somewhere in a three, three and a fraction percent per year growth. The school district portion of those taxes actually went down, sixteen dollars, or one-point-two percent. And the value of the home went up by one hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, or one hundred sixty-seven percent. Page ten, again, Treasurer Holland alluded to the tack, the mill rate survey within our CISA group of districts, there are thirty-nine districts, and of the thirty-nine, you can see where Hudson falls, its rank is number thirty-three from the bottom, ranked by mill rate at seven-fourteen for the oh-six, oh-seven year. And again, eleven, that was already touched on, that were three hundred twenty-six out of four hundred twenty-five districts for the oh-six, oh-seven fiscal year for mill And then page twelve goes into revenues for the general fund by source, and you can see that first line on there, the source, the local property tax. And again, this is for the general fund only, does not include debt service, is nineteen million, five fifty-six for the oh-seven, oh-eight proposed budget. And then you can see there are other items down there that make up our total revenues of forty-five million, nine nineteen. And then on page thirteen, you've got a pie chart that compares the actual oh-six, oh-seven revenues to the proposed oh-seven, oh-eight revenues. And you see the district, really, the main source of revenues are state and local. The district receives very little in federal, and so the main sources of revenues, again, are federal and local sources. This year, we're, we are, the mix between federal and state has changed slightly, so we're getting a little bit more funding from the state. And if you look at page fourteen, it, again, looking at, and this information is from the Department of Public Instruction's website, and this talks about state revenue raised per member or per student. And Hudson is not a huge generator of revenue per student, but it's about three hundred fifty-fourth out of four hundred twenty-six districts in oh-five, oh-six. And page fifteen, again, gets into expenses, and these are general fund expenses, Fund And page sixteen, also general fund expenses. And I'll just draw your attention to the middle of that page, page sixteen, ten E, that's account number five thirty-one, labeled "building acquisition." What that three million, one twelve represents is the spending of one-point-four-five million, or one, I'm sorry, one-point-six million for the district offices, and then one-point-five million for coming out of fund balance for the Rivercrest Elementary construction. Page seventeen, again, gives you a pie chart diagram of the oh-six, oh-seven actual expenditures, and then the proposed oh-seven, oh-eight expenditures. And as is pretty obvious, we're a service organization, so most of our expenses are in the form of salaries and benefits for employees. And you can see the amount to roughly sixty-seven, anywhere from sixty-five to sixty-seven Moving on to page eighteen. Again, this is Department of Revenue information, and it's the, it is all four hundred twenty-six districts in the year oh-five, oh-six. And what it's looking at is a cost per student. So when we look at costs, the state has a format that they use for all districts in the state, so that they can get comparative information, apples to apples, and be able to compare districts statewide. And this, in the oh-five, oh-six school year, Hudson ranked number four-ten out of four hundred twenty-six districts, meaning we were near the bottom in what we spend per student. You can see the state costs, the state average, and the upper, upper-left of that page is ten thousand, nine eighty-nine, and Hudson is at seven thousand, nine forty-eight, or I'm sorry, nine thousand, two twenty. And the previous year, going back to last year, we were at three, we were ranked three-seventy-three. So our costs have, have gone down even more than the previous year. Page nineteen is the budget adoption format, and it lays out revenues and expenditures in a program, programmatic format, and also gives fund balance information for each one of the funds in the district. So you can see the general, the general fund and the beginning fund balance, starting in, or rather, let's take a look at the ending fund balance, starting in the oh-five, oh-six year, seventeen million, five fifty. The oh-six, oh-seven year is projected to be eighteen million, one fifty-seven, and then oh-seven, oh-eight, where we will be, we will be using fund balance to pay for the administrative service center and also Rivercrest, some of Rivercrest Elementary construction. The fund balance is projected to drop to fifteen million dollars. And then again, you can see the different sources of revenue within the district for the general fund. And if you move on to the next page, which was page twenty, you can see a special projects fund, and that's actually a combination of different funds. For us, it's Fund Twenty-One and Twenty-Six. And you can see the debt service fund, and that's, for us, is Fund Thirty-Nine. And again, the capital projects, and that's, that holds the expenditures for the construction of Rivercrest Elementary. And then we've got food service and community service, and again, a little asterisk there, the above funds are fee-based and do not have an impact on the, on the property tax levy. Also a footnote, the district in oh-four, oh-five established a trust to fund its other post-employment benefits liability. Most governments in the nation have a liability here, as well as Hudson, to pay for retiree benefits. And so, under the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, adopted standards for governments to report this liability, and the district has established a trust and has started to fund that trust to reduce that liability over time. If the trust doesn't get funded, your liability continues to grow, because you're not, you're not having any earnings on those dollars. If you can put some dollars into the trust, you'll have some earnings to reduce your liability over time. So the district has started that, and here's some additional information in that footnote. Page twenty-two, as Parliamentarian Walzberger mentioned, is the wording for the resolution tonight. So the total amount of tax being proposed is twenty-four million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty dollars. And then we have some other information, page twenty-four, which looks at the general fund, the balance sheet. Again, Treasurer Holland went through this, so I won't spend much time on it, other than to, to talk a little bit about fund balance and cash, and cash and investments. And the two are, as you can see, they're not the same thing. Cash and investments, as of June thirtieth of oh-seven, which is the end of our fiscal year, stood at twelve million, a little over twelve million dollars, whereas the fund balance, total fund balance stood at about eighteen million. So cash and investments are not the same thing. Part of the reason the district needs to maintain some cash reserves is because of the timing of our tax payments and aid payments. There are some months during the year where the district has quite a low cash balance, simply because of the timing of payments. They're not always ratably received throughout the year. So there are some months where we receive very little in the way of a tax payment or an aid payment from the state, but we yet need to continue our operations, just like any other business, and need to pay our bills. And so it's been, it's been to the advantage of the district to be able to have that ability to do that, rather than the alternative, which many districts do, and go out and do short-term borrowing. Do short-term borrowing, and then you increase your interest costs. So a little bit of information on the difference between cash and fund balance. And then the designated, designated for capital projects, under that, under the fund balance, you can see, four million, four hundred twelve thousand dollars. And as of June thirtieth, that represented two-point-eight million dollars for Rivercrest Elementary and one-point-six million for the Administrative Service Center. If you go to page twenty-five, what we've done here is attempt to lay out the differences between last year's expenditures and then this year's budget. And because, again, like I said, this isn't exactly a normal year. We're building a building, building an elementary school. We've purchased an office building to make room at the high school for students. So we're doing these things, and these things don't happen every year, so they do tend to have a fluctuation or make your budget fluctuate. And you can see under that first section, the general fund expenditures, standing at forty-four million, one seventy in oh-six, oh-seven, and then the budget, oh-seven, oh-eight, at forty-nine million. Well, that would be an eleven percent increase, which would be quite high. But if you take the three million, one twelve out, which was the amount authorized to be used for, from fund balance, or the remaining amounts to be used for fund balance for Rivercrest and the Administrative Service Center, you're really looking at about a three-point-nine-six percent increase. And that's for a growing district. You heard the numbers from Mary and Tom tonight. The district continues to grow, and three-point-nine, nine-six percent is, is a pretty small, small increase in expenditure growth. If you look at the total expenditures for all funds, fifty-nine million, three seventy-eight versus eighty-six million, eight sixty-one, that's an eye-opener, forty-six percent. But again, if you go through the exercise of taking those things out that are unusual items, we've got, again, the three million, one twelve, we've got the refinancing of bond anticipation notes for the debt service fund of nine million, seven thirty, and then we have the expenditures for Rivercrest Elementary, coming out of a capital projects fund of twelve million, five hundred. When you look at all funds, again, you're looking at a three-point-six-one percent increase Page twenty-six and twenty-seven are a compilation from the Department of Public Instruction, again, looking at all districts in the state. And this particular report looks at districts that have under-leveing, such as Hudson. And again, this data is for oh-six, oh-seven, and so if we sort and rank those districts, you can see Hudson is number one in the amount of dollars under-leveed. Last year, the district under-leveed by two-point-nine million dollars. And you can see the next closest district, under-leveed by two-point-one, and that's Campbellport. And if you look down the list, there are many other districts that are much larger. So in, in that sense, as a ratio-wise, the district has really far and above beat any other district as far as under-leveing. And you can see all of the other data and all of the other districts there that have And page twenty-eight, these are all of the outstanding debt issues of the district, and these are for previous building projects and schools, and then the last three transactions are, are related to Rivercrest Elementary. And then in the back, if you really like this stuff, you can go through the definition of terms, and I promise, I won't read those verbatim. I won't even go through them. You can look at them on your leisure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim, for that report. Now is the time, under Article Seven of our agenda, a hearing on the budget. This is the time when lecturers can, and can come forward and make comments or ask questions regarding the information that they've heard regarding financial condition and the budget of the school district. So many of the lecturers wish to step forward. We have microphones at the front here. We just ask that you state your name and your current address.
Good evening. Steve Hermsen, eight thirteen Harborview Road, Hudson.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Dan. I'm not prepared here, like I'd like to be for this, but a question, son, for the board is this. Knowing that we've looked over and saw, and we've seen such a decline in the property values, I believe, that's very deceiving as far as the numbers that the district uses for comparison for the budget. According to the Department of Revenue's website that I checked on tonight, we see that the majority of the valuation increase that they, that you've based the budget on, being, I think you said, a five percent, five, six percent increase is what the valuation of the district. We see that the majority of that is land. It's not so much improvements or the, or the homes on those. So I would, again, I try to caution the board and to realize that while we may be, I think we heard here, two-point-nine million under the revenue cap, I still believe that we need to do a better job and get lower. To, I don't know how many people realize what the minimum is that a board has to tax the people for the school budget. And while we may be two million, two-point-nine million underneath the revenue cap, the minimum guideline, or the minimum that a taxing district has to provide is one-half of what the state grants. Given that our state is, our state shared revenue is twenty-five million, we could be striving for thirteen coming off of the local property taxpayers, rather than the twenty that we're at. The other part that I, I would remind people of, we, again, every year I come before this board, and we talk about the, the fund balance. This year, what I found a little strange here is I happened to pull up last year's annual meeting notice that we had, and the unreserved fund balance we had last year was thirteen million, fifty thousand dollars, I must say fifty-one thousand. And this year, we're now at thirteen million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, which tells me we're pretty close to seven hundred thousand dollars. However, when we use the numbers that were given in the booklet tonight, it's at only six hundred thousand dollars. Now to the city residents, here's the thing that I'd like to kind of remind the people here of. We've just seen them go through turmoil with the police chief and over the, the city budget. Take the, the six hundred thousand that you had in fund balance- Take the, the six hundred thousand that you had in fund balance reserve for this year alone, and take forty percent of that, roughly, what, if you're looking at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of where the taxpayers were overtaxed, that could have gone for the city residents, that could have helped them with their police department. Just things like that. That's where I believe this school board needs to try harder to get this budget down. I believe we're, we're basing our budget on an over-inflated dollar of our assessed value, and it, I just think it's wrong. I think, when I go through the, the monthly expenditures, I think there's a lot of fat in there. My opinion, but that's, that's the way I feel. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any other comments, questions from the lecturers? If there's no other comments or questions, we'll move on to, we have before us in your materials, a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion for the resolution stated in your materials on page twenty-two. And that motion can come from the electorate. Any board member wish to put forward a motion for approval of the resolution stated in the materials?
Mr. Chair, I'll, Mr. Minnick? I would put in motion, or put in, inform a motion that be resolved that a tax in the total amount of twenty-four million two hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred thirty dollars be and is hereby levied against taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
We have a motion by Mr. Minnick. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Crimmens. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll have a, a voice vote. Let me read the resolution one more time. Be it resolved that a tax in the total amount of twenty-four million two hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion is approved, based on the voice vote. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to new business, setting the date for the two thousand eight annual meeting. In your materials, you see that we've indicated a, a date of Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand eight, at seven P.M. I'll entertain a motion for setting the date for the two thousand eight annual meeting.
Mr. President, I move that we establish the date for the two thousand eight annual meeting, September ninth, two thousand eight, seven P.M.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Crimmens. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is approved. Any other new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the annual meeting.